Well, once again, we're here with candidate interviews for 2024. I'm Todd Flora, the publisher of West Side Voice. And joining me today is Natalia Zernitzkaya, a candidate for Santa Monica City Council. She is endorsed by a number of organizations, including Santa Monicans for Renters Rights and the Santa Monica Democratic Club. She may mention a couple of more. But Natalia, thanks for joining us again.
Thank you so much for having me. It is a pleasure to be on chatting with you and getting to share a little bit more about who I am, why I'm running, and why folks should get excited for this election and not just the national election.
That's right. That's right. Certainly, you'll benefit from higher voter turnout for the national election. But yeah, we people need to be knowing who they're voting for locally, and that's one of the reasons we're doing this. So let's dive right into it. You have a very compelling and somewhat harrowing immigrant story. Can you talk to our viewers a little bit about your journey to the US and adjusting to life as an American?
Sure. So my family and I were Jewish refugees who fled Belarus after the fall of the USSR. I was only six years old when we came here, and I honestly don't remember much of life before we got here. We were really lucky that we landed in a place that had, you know, folks who had come before, who knew that it was important to set up social safety nets, to have good government assistance programs, to have protections like rent control. So when we moved here, we only had a couple hundred dollars initially. We lived in a cramped apartment with my aunt and uncle and their son and some other folks who were living there, my uncle's mom and her caretaker. And it was quite a few of us in there. But luckily, we were able to find a rent-controlled apartment in San Francisco that was close to great schools. And my dad was able to get a good-paying union job, which also let us get really good health care. My mom was able to go back to school even though she already had an advanced degree. And eventually, they were able to achieve their American dream of buying a home. And with everything that they sacrificed for me to be able to have a better life and for us in general to be able to have a better life, I turned that into a passion for service and a passion for social and economic justice.
Yeah, that's fantastic. Let's get into your coming to live in Santa Monica. And what, how did you get involved in public service in our great city? And what are some of your local accomplishments?
So I I came here after I graduated from UC Santa Cruz. I got my degree in economics and I moved down here with this dream that I was going to find my full-time job that would become my career and find a place to live within a month. And of course, that did not happen. I was very lucky, though, that I had the safety net of my best friend's mom who rented out rooms in her house. So I actually ended up renting a room for her, from her, for the first four years that I lived in LA, which was, it was right outside of Santa Monica. But my dream those four years was, I want to live in Santa Monica. This is going to be my place. This is my place, because I had already started getting involved. I served on the Administrative Board of Trustees of the Church in Ocean Park initially, and that led me to meet a lot of other community activists and folks who were just in Santa Monica civic life. And I ended up joining the Board of the League of Women Voters of Santa Monica and eventually became president. I served as president for four years. And that just kind of snowballed into being on lots of other boards and commissions. So I formerly also served on the Audit Subcommittee for the City. I'm currently on the Transient Occupancy Tax Advisory Committee, as well as the Virginia Avenue Park Advisory Committee, Climate Action Santa Monica Advisor Committee. There's like a very long list, and I don't want to go through it because we'd be here too long.
Well, you certainly have a lot of qualifications, that's for sure.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it. I mean, I am like one of those weird people that is super into process, which I think is not necessarily something that resonates with a lot of people, but it is. That's really important to good government. I mean, I literally have an antique Robert's Rules of Order book right here on my bookshelf that you can't see.
Yeah.
My friend got it for me for my birthday or for Christmas. I don't remember. But anyway, some of my accomplishments here, accomplishments here locally in Santa Monica that I'm really, really proud of. When I was on the Board of the League of Women Voters of Santa Monica, I chaired a committee on homelessness. So if you know anything about the League, or if you don't, basically, they can't take a position on something unless they've already thoroughly studied it and they have a policy position by which to judge, can we, can we say yes or no? Can we provide input on this? So the homelessness position had not been updated for 30 years. And as you can probably guess, and as folks who are watching this can probably guess, a lot's changed in 30 years. So we ended up spending three years doing an in-depth study. We put together an amazing study guide, and the resulting policy position that we drafted was later used by the state league to help craft a homelessness action policy that's being used by leagues all across the state. So that's one thing that I'm really, really proud of. Another thing is just Climate Action Santa Monica, just as a whole. I was actually on the Board of Trustees of the Church in Ocean Park when, when Michael Tarbick came to the board and said, hey, I think we should have a group that does something about climate change, because climate change is a problem. It's like, yes, yes, it is. So I was one of the folks that voted yes to form a group that eventually became Climate Action Santa Monica and now trains young people in what it means to be a climate activist, how to make effective change, and gets them excited. I was, I ran into some of the Climate Action Santa Monica folks at the park the other day, and my neighbor was there too, and we got to talking, and my neighbor was like, I have not ever known high school students that knew this much about climate change and the climate crisis. They are so much better informed than we were at their age. So it was, it was really impressive, and I love seeing the impact that it's had on the community and on those students. And I've even gotten to do some civil discourse workshops with them because civil discourse is something that I have some some expertise in a little bit, you know?
I hope you didn't hear my dog just running, barking madly through our living room. We have work being done on the building, and it's, she's going nuts. So I hope I hit that mute button quickly enough.
Yeah. I didn't hear anything. Mine is asleep, and luckily not snoring yet, otherwise it would be a little bit distracting.
Okay. Well, that's fantastic. And you majored in economics. Your day job is, job is, as I believe, a financial analyst? Can you tell me if there's any applicability between that and how it might benefit your work on the council?
Oh, absolutely. In so many ways, it's applicable to the work that I'm going to do on the council and the work that I've already been doing in Santa Monica. So my, you know, I'm a financial analyst. My official title is Senior Due Diligence Analyst, but literally nobody knows what that means. But basically, I review alternative investments. I used to work on mutual funds. Now I'm on alternative investments. So it's basically like there is a company that people want to invest in. It's my job to make sure that they're doing what they say they're going to do. They're doing it how they say they're going to do, to check if their potential risk is commensurate with the potential reward, and to really dive into the specifics and make sure that there's no improper behavior happening there, and to make sure that investors are going to be protected if we allow the folks who invest with the financial advisors that are across our company to sell it or to offer it to their clients. So it requires a lot of reading. It requires a lot of thoughtful analysis. It requires a lot of asking the right questions. Because the other part of it is, I'm not an expert on every single one of the underlying types of investments that are in these, in these alternative investments. But the trick with due diligence is knowing what questions to ask. And I think that's very applicable to the council as well. I'm not going to memorize the municipal code. I'm not going to be an expert on what are the best practices for X, Y, and Z, but that's what the city staff is for. And I will know what questions to ask. I mean, I already read the agendas and staff reports, so partway there are there already.
Yeah, very good. The current council majority has made a lot of memories that I find ranging from questionable to reprehensible. Can you talk about some of the areas where you think they've fallen short or even done harm?
Absolutely. It's actually one of the reasons that I'm running is, over the past few years, we've seen our city council and our city kind of turn from this model of, you know, progressive behavior, of good policy, of interesting and unique pilot programs, to petty infighting and accusations and, I'll just say it, unethical behavior. It's very disappointing. So back in 2021, there was the first leak out of closed session, which was literally a violation of a state law that's supposed to help improve government transparency. So there was a violation. Not only was there a violation, there was a refusal to investigate that violation because it would have cost too much money and because it would have been too divisive. I don't think it would have been that divisive, honestly. I think getting to the bottom of what happened to ensure it didn't happen again would have helped to heal some divides, perhaps. And more recently, we once again had another leak out of closed session, something that, to the best of my knowledge, had not happened prior to the current council majority being on the council. And I just want to clarify, I'm not, you know, saying that about any one particular council member. It is about making sure that, as a council, they're representing the city and they're representing the city with the highest standards of ethics and integrity. So not only did they refuse to investigate the second leak out of closed session, there were accusations of the proposal to even investigate being a politically motivated attack and weaponizing the city attorney's office. And that just, I was in shock when I heard that because this is not, this is not what Santa Monica is supposed to be about. And in that second meeting, after they, they decided not to, or at the same time, they decided not to move forward with an investigation after the second leak,
They basically to cover it up.
Your words. I mean, they also voted to effectively exempt themselves from ethics rules. Because there are ethics rules that already apply to city staff members, and city staff wanted to extend those to the boards and commission members as well as council members. Well, council actually did ask them to bring it back. So that was something, they were voting on something they had asked for. And yet, that was once again deemed too political.
Yeah.
And hunted until after the election. And even a more recent example, on Tuesday night, the last item that they voted on was something that the city attorney had literally said, this is illegal. We do not have control over this, you know, this program that you want to stop, and we do not have the authority to take these actions that you are asking us to take. And I'm obviously summarizing it, not quoting. They voted four to three to still pass that item. And when the city manager and when other council members asked, so what do you want them to do since they literally just said this is unenforceable and they can't do anything with what you've asked them to do? You've basically asked, my paraphrasing again, you basically asked them to break the law. And instead of responding, instead of taking a moment to think and provide a thoughtful response to a very relevant question, in my opinion, they decided to just adjourn the meeting. And I was once again in shock.
We really shouldn't be that surprised at this point, though, should we?
I think our city absolutely deserves better.
Yeah.
I think, I think Santa Monicans deserve better. I think Santa Monicans deserve folks who are going to do the work and aren't going to get distracted, or hopefully won't get distracted by petty squabbles.
Yeah. So let's get, sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, they, the city council is supposed to take care of the entire city. They are trying, they are supposed to make sure that they are looking out for what is in the best interest of all Santa Monicans. Of Santa Monicans who currently live here, Santa Monicans who will live here. That includes the students going to our schools who are going to grow up and hopefully want to come back and live here. That includes folks who are going to make a career here in Santa Monica at one of our amazing businesses. And that's not what's happening right now.
Right. So let's get into some of the issues facing the city. What do you think the biggest issues are facing Santa Monica? And or may rise up in the next four years?
So for sure, homelessness and the housing crisis are, I think, at the top of most folks' minds. Because homelessness as a whole across the region feels like it's gotten worse. I know there was a slight dip in the point in time count and then numbers for Santa Monica specifically, but we also have to remember that's a point in time that's not necessarily over time. So we don't know what it's at now. Not that that data is going to be as helpful as we hope it, it might be just to have a number. Because there's real people behind those numbers, and we have to address those people's needs. And we have to make sure that folks who have, for example, severe mental health or addiction issues, get the care and the treatment that they need so that they are not a risk of harming themselves or harming others. We're also missing the folks who are unhoused or are on the edge of homelessness, who we could, I'll say, more cost-effectively help. Like folks who are maybe just a few hundred dollars short or month to month, or might be, if an emergency happens, it's much cheaper to keep someone housed than it is to get someone who's already on the street into housing. There's, there's a lot more I can say on that, but for, for the purpose of making sure we have enough time to get through everything. My next one is public safety. So I've definitely heard that folks don't feel as safe as they used to in Santa Monica, and I think that's for a number of reasons. So I think that what we need to do there, and what I'll do, is find out what is making people feel unsafe and get to the root causes of those issues. I understand there's probably a lot of them. Some folks might not feel safe because they're worried about cars speeding and them or their child getting hit by a careless driver. And honestly, that's an infrastructure issue, and I'm really glad that we're lowering the speed limit on some streets to 25 because speed is a major factor in that. There's also lots of other things that have to do with public safety that we need to be mindful of. I know smash-and-grab burglaries are an issue, larceny, there's, there's a lot. So I think we need to work collaboratively and make sure that our first responders are staffed adequately and have access to the tools and the resources and the technologies that they need. One of the examples that I really love that I saw during a presentation by Chief Batista to the city council was the drone as first responder program. Because it helps them know what they're walking into.
Right.
So there was the, the image or the video that he showed was a man outside of a CVS holding what looked like a gun. But because the drone was able to get there first, they knew that, they found out it's not actually a gun. It was a lighter shaped like a gun. So that was able to help de-escalate the situation and make sure that, you know, when, when they got there, they knew what they were walking into. So those kinds of creative uses of technology that allow our first responders to be more effective, we need that. We need things like more modern equipment for firefighters. We need, there's, there's a lot of things that we need there. And the third thing, and it's not really the, the, it's difficult to, you know, place one, two, and three on there, but economic recovery. We have not fully recovered from the pandemic. And I don't think I need to tell anybody who lives in Santa Monica or goes to our libraries or experiences the joys of Santa Monica today that we are still recovering and we still have significant liabilities that we have to account for. It's going to be a difficult budget cycle next year. The thing that I think folks forget, or maybe just, I don't even think it's forget, because I think most people don't know this. Seventy percent of our general fund budget comes from local sources. So that's things like local taxes, the money that people spend in our businesses and our restaurants, and just, you know, enjoying life in Santa Monica. It's from use fees. It's from all of these things. So we're creating the Santa Monica we want to see. We're funding it. And also the tourists who are coming to visit. So in order to address our economic issues, a big part of what we need to do is make sure that our businesses are set up for success. We need to identify where issues are occurring so we can address them. For example, I know a lot of folks have had trouble with permits. Permitting can take a very long time. I know it's a very exciting topic, permits, but.
Oh, no, it's a big, it's a huge topic.
Huge, yeah, because there is literally businesses that have not been able to open for months, if not years, because they weren't able to get the permits.
Right, and financing can go away.
Absolutely. And they're holding costs and you have to pay, like, it is, it is harming our economy to not have a more efficient permitting system, but it's also kind of a cycle because in order to have a more efficient permitting system, we also need to be able to hire more people, like. So we kind of need to do everything at once, and we need to be doing it strategically. We need to be prioritizing the things that Santa Monicans need most. We're at two-thirds of the staffing levels for our libraries that we were at pre-COVID. I would love to be able to get that staffing back to 100% because I think everybody loves our libraries. I live, you know, just down the street from one of them, and the librarians are fantastic. The programs they put on are wonderful. I see kids in there enjoying, you know, storytime with their parents and guardians, and it's libraries are a wonderful place, and they're a great third place for folks, so.
Good. We do need to keep moving along here. What, if anything, I'm going to kind of combine two questions. What, if anything, have you found to be the most effective ingredient in combating NIMBYism? And my second question, both related to housing. We kind of know that short-term rental businesses like Airbnb are exacerbating the housing availability and affordability crisis, but what do we do about it with so few people in the city attorney's office?
Excellent question. A combination of questions, so I will try to be brief this time. But in terms of combating NIMBYism, I think the most effective thing for me in conversations with folks who are maybe a little bit resistant to change and to, you know, maybe new housing on their block or new whatever near them is explaining and demonstrating what's in it for them, and honestly, just listening, listening and validating, because people do have real fear sometimes, whether they are, you know, based in just a fear or feeling that they have or something that's actually happening. And I think being able to have a civil discussion about it, being able to hear each other out has been very helpful for me. In terms of short-term rentals impacting our local housing crisis, our housing affordability crisis, our housing shortage, all of that, we do have a fairly strong Airbnb, or not Airbnb specifically, but we do have a fairly strong short-term rental ordinance. There's definitely ways that I think it could be strengthened, and I think we should take some lessons from West Hollywood because they recently, or somewhat recently, I'll say, passed a an expansion, I believe, or an amendment to their short-term rental ordinance. And I think we can learn a lot from that. The other piece of it is enforcement. So code enforcement can only do so much. But what's really cool and something that I learned as a member of the Transient Occupancy Tax Advisory Committee, which was from Measure CS that we passed in 2022, half of it goes to funding certain types of projects. So one of the things that it's funding is new software for code enforcement that will go through all of the listings and identify which ones are illegal. So instead of a code enforcement officer having to take hours and hours and hours.
Guesswork, yeah.
Yeah, not just guesswork, but also like, you can identify which ones are illegal. You're not allowed to rent out an entire unit, rent out an entire house unless somebody is on the premises. There are certain things that you can very easily tell just by the listing. We do have some issues with folks maybe putting the address right outside of Santa Monica, but that's something we'd have to deal with, with an ordinance. But this is going to be able to allow our code enforcement officers to be much more effective in enforcing our short-term rental ordinance.
Excellent answers.
At the great spot. Yeah, great.
Excellent answers. Okay, before we get to your big finish, a couple of fun questions. What are you watching these days?
A lot of like YouTube explainer videos.
Nothing, nothing fun on Apple TV or Netflix?
I mean, I've been watching a show that's technically probably six years old on Netflix. That's, I think it's called like Unreal, about the making of a reality show. It's very.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Yes, with Sherry Appleby.
Yeah, I think so.
I saw, I saw they just added that. Netflix has also just bought and made available a ton of AMC properties. Not the movie theater, the channel.
Take a look after the election.
Yeah, yeah. No, I'm getting a lot of that. And I, in fact, I'm kind of considering adding, changing the question to what are you watching, listening to, or reading based on the answers I've gotten so far? But you, okay, so we'll go with YouTube explainer videos.
Yeah.
That's, yeah, that's, that's how I learn anything I need to know about like a new phone or app these days.
Yeah, there's a really cool one about the upgrades coming to LAX that I watched recently. And it's about, this is what they did or are doing to this terminal, this terminal, this terminal. This is how everything's going to connect. It was like.
Oh, I want to watch that, yeah. Okay.
Let me see if I can find it and send you the link later.
Second, second fun question until we give you the last word. This is my favorite fun question. It's the 2028 Olympics. They're here. Money is no object. What events are you buying tickets for?
Well, obviously beach volleyball because it's going to be in our backyard, and I'd love to show off Santa Monica. And gymnastics. I so would love to see the gymnasts perform in person. I watched some of the routine, and I'm just like, how do they do that? It's incredible. They're, they're amazing athletes and so impressive. And also, one of my nieces does gymnastics. Yeah, so I, I think it's something that would be very exciting to watch in person, and also I'd love to bring her if, you know, that, if money's no object, then, yeah.
Good. Okay, well, we passed the 30-minute mark, and we're going to cut off in a couple of minutes. But before we do, what are any issues that you don't feel we got to quickly? And then make your closing argument to the people of Santa Monica.
So I think we covered pretty much everything. We talked a little bit about our economic recovery and the budget and making sure that we're set up for success and having to deal with the difficulties that are going to be coming before us. Something that I did not mention, this next council that we elect is going to be the council that's going to be working on the next housing element. So we have to do our housing element every eight years. This last time we did our housing element, it was deemed noncompliant, and we got hit with builder's remedy. Despite warnings from staff, despite warnings from housing advocates like myself, we got hit with builder's remedy and lost local control.
And who are the, who are the council members that are probably responsible for that?
Well, I would prefer not to name names. I think that folks can take a look at who the current council majority is and.
Oh, the current council majority, okay.
Yeah, so.
Do you want me to name the names?
If you want to. I just, you know, I want to make sure that I'm, I want to show why I'm a good candidate. I don't want to bring anybody else down. I don't want to bring anybody else down and I, while I want to, you know, I will criticize votes and I will criticize policy positions. I never want to criticize a person just for person. And I know that's not what this is, but um, just want to focus on me if that's okay.
Yes, absolutely.
So we need folks who understand not only how important it is to enact good policy, but understand how we enact good pow- policy. Because like I said at the very beginning, process is very important. Sometimes the process is just as important as the policy because we need to make sure that whatever process we follow to make good policy, it's fair, it thinks ahead. We consider the viewpoints of people who don't have a chance to come to a city council meeting on a Tuesday night and wait around until eleven o'clock at night to speak for two minutes of their perspective. So that's something that I want to bring to the council. I want to bring in more voices. I want to bring in the voices that we don't get to hear from. And I want to make Santa Monica the amazing place with strong community values. The place that cares about each other or where people care about each other, I should say. I want to make Santa Monica that place again and I just, I I really love this place. And I want to make sure that we protect it for the next generation and beyond.
Very good, very good. Well, she's Natalia Zernitskaya. She is running for the Santa Monica City Council and we wish her the best of luck. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you so much, Todd. And now my dog has realized that we're done, so she. Have a good one.